Not doing it.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Elliot? Mr. Elliot? Mr. Elliot? Mr. Elliot? Mr. Elliot? How are you? 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 Okay. 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 Okay.
Yeah.
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 Please, go ahead.
Uh, well, as it relates to the site plan, yeah, thi- this is on a corner and uh, corner clear vision is an issue. And that was accommodated with a landscaping area that is within that. So if you look on your site plan, you know, well back from the curb line is the actual right of way line. Much of what appears to be this site is not part of the site at all, but rather part of the street rights away. And so the clear vision area relates to a triangle with twenty-five feet on each side. Uh, along the rights of way in that area. And you see they have low growing landscaping proposed there, which is appropriate. But then the plan does not propose to remove the pavement that is on the right of way side between the curb and that landscape area, which creates a very odd situation. And particularly on the Wolf Creek Highway side where cars are not allowed to encroach onto that area. Removal of that pavement would be critical to the site functioning properly without constant supervision. And so, uh, we're recommending that that be done as a condition of site plan approval. And then that ties to two of your findings there related to. Because it also creates a confusion as relates to ingress and egress if you don't remove it. So, uh, it relates to two of your findings there and uh, uh, that are specific to car lots, as you said. Uh, under the zoning exception permit.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are we clear on what the discussion was there? Uh, that the pavement, pavement areas of.
As it sits now, he's, they have to remove some, correct?
Yes.
According to that picture there. They just need to do more, we need more done than once.
Right, the, the rest of it, basically.
Yeah.
So this here and here.
Mister Elliot, are you, are you clear on the, are you following up? Mister Flynn, excuse me, are you following it along on what we're discussing?
I do, I guess I'm not sure why we can't use curb stops or something like that, but, but uh, it's what you guys require.
Unknowingly parking there because it would, it would create a, a vision block at a very critical intersection.
Also aesthetically, you know.
Would look better.
Would look awful. But, uh, you know, bumper blocks don't stay put either. You know, removing the pavement is the correct solution.
Yep, okay. Commissioners, questions for the petitioner? Brian, anything?
Nope.
Is there anyone in the audience, either uh, in person or online that wishes to address the planning commission on this proposal? There's no one online, okay, never mind that. Commissioners, are we ready to vote on this then? On both a zoning exception permit and approval of the site plan with the notation, uh, with the stipulation that the pavement be removed, uh, adjacent to the setback area and to ensure that, uh, there's clear sight visions for that intersection.
Move to approve the resolution.
Support. The motion in appro- in the second for approval of the resolution the staff has provided. That was Commissioner Love and Commissioner Taylor, I believe.
Correct.
Any additional discussion? Make sure if we could have a roll call vote.
Yes. House? Yes. Watson? Or? Leatherby?
Support.
Love?
Yes.
Taylor?
Support.
Jacobus?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is, so is there another stuff I have to take after this other than like going in front of anybody else or I?
No, the, the site plan needs to be updated to show those changes. And then you submit those to Jeremy and uh, he'll be able to approve zoning compliance and uh, you'll need a new C O for the building, of course, uh, uh, from the building official when you, you know, your buyer will, but uh, there's nothing else with the zoning.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is consideration again of the proposal for uh, chickens in the educational research and office districts. We have, uh, last month, we asked staff to draft a, uh, a, uh, a draft ordinance for us to consider and you have that in your packet. I presume commissioners, you had an opportunity to review that. One of the questions we would raise after having read that, and I see that we have folks from Santa Heights here, is what would, what would be the what to anticipate would be the maximum number of chickens that you would have at, uh?
Yes, we spoke to the head of the permaculture garden, he is looking for twenty chickens. Um, he wouldn't be looking for more than that.
Uh, it might be useful to know what the area of this particular garden is so that we can relate the chickens to the area available. Cause this isn't just for that place, it theoretically could be for any place.
Well, we do say that there has to be, the, the proposed, the draft says eight square feet per bird.
I think that's the coop, that's for the coop.
Three square feet of space per bird inside the coop, eight square feet per bird in a covered and fenced outside run.
Oh, well, that was, you'd get about a thousand chickens based on that, so we might want.
That's why we also say a maximum of.
This was a port from the residential that I did, so.
Yes.
We could change.
Yeah, it might not be a. Might not be.
We can just say up to twenty chickens.
That's what it says at the very first line.
Is up to twenty.
Yeah. Yeah.
How many?
So you're setting a maximum already.
Right, but it, the, the other is kind of support, superfluous at that point.
Well.
Eight square feet per.
Unless your permaculture is less than that.
Right. I think it takes both.
Pretty small.
Number and also how much space do you need per chicken? I think it requires that we specify both.
Do we define what a permaculture garden is?
No, and we should do that as well.
Cause that's where, I mean, honestly, that's where we should start, right? Cause if we're gonna say it's gotta be.
Working on it, so feel free to have a seat.
And, and how, do we know how large the, the permaculture garden is there? I mean, the.
Well, that, that was the question I was proposing you ask them.
Yeah.
Several acres.
Because, because it reads that, you know, it must be enclosed, uh, that the coop must be enclosed and then the run must be enclosed entirely covered and fenced, well, when are the chickens gonna get to the issue of, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Doing away with the, uh.
Yeah, you need, you need to get rid of the language that was from the backyard chickens, so it's not covered. It's a, it's a ten, they have a ten foot fence around there.
So it doesn't have to be covered.
But it would not need to be covered.
It would be need, does need to be fenced.
The, but the whole.
We do want it to be fenced.
The whole permaculture garden then would be fenced.
Yes.
Proposal would be to require that, yes.
Um, so.
I just want to remind everybody too, that we're not just speaking of Siena, so.
No.
Correct, we have to keep that in mind when we're having those discussions.
Exactly.
Point, we need to be thinking. Yes, worst case scenario is what I would say.
Yeah, yeah. So we do need, we need to define what a perma- permaculture garden is and maybe you folks could help us with that at some point, maybe not right at this minute. But uh, um, if we're gonna use that word in ordinance, we need to make it clear as to what we're referring to. We need to specify that it be, that the garden be fenced or whether it be fenced in its entirety or it be fenced of such a size to accommodate the number of chickens that are.
Or, or fenced for where the chickens are going to be.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, it could be bigger than that, but you know, if we want, if the chickens are in a certain area, then that has to be, that has to be fenced.
Yep.
In this instance, they are.
In this case, yes.
In this case, but it's not covered.
But we could, we could, we could envision a huge permaculture garden with a quarter of it being fenced with chickens.
Sure.
Because that's where they would be operating from.
Right.
Yes. The other three quarters, they don't need to.
Yeah.
What else, commissioners, did you, as you read this, did you consider?
Are we saying twenty chickens then?
Well, that's what we have on written down.
That's, that's what we're gonna put in.
Yeah.
But we have to define what a permaculture garden.
Yes, we do.
So.
And we need to, and we need a number as to chickens per square foot, you know, maximum chickens per square foot probably too. Which is probably more a matter of, you mean, treatment of chickens than it is of anything else.
Certainly. So.
I, I wonder if we should move away from the word permaculture because the definition is an agricultural system or method that seeks to integrate human activity with natural surroundings so as to create highly effective self-sustaining ecosystems, and that's Mary Webster.
Who's that?
Do we have a, do we have a working definition of a permaculture garden that's, that's different than what Jeremiah just read or?
But I can contact the Adrian Committee and sisters and see what definition they use and what operating, operating practices they use.
Okay, or, or we don't call it that. And, and we call it something that we can define.
And I, I think that might be more to the point, like when I looked up permaculture, I thought, but I'm not sure that.
Seems like a philosophy.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
This, this is used as like a lab situation as well, isn't it?
There, there could be some research, things like that going on. Um, I'm not sure how much lab research is going on right now, but it is one of the hopes that with the chickens in there, we can study their effectiveness and some of the other things with having the birds there.
Maybe we refer to it as a nature area.
It, it's, it's meant to be a place where you don't use pesticides, fertilizers, other unnatural approaches, you know?
And I don't think it's just a nature area, it's, you know.
Yeah, it's more specific than that.
If you talk about enclosures, it has to be fenced. So how high a fence we wanna have, you know, they had a six foot fence there and then deer kept.
Yes, I know.
They installed a ten foot fence, which was not cheap.
Well, just, but just to contain the kick chickens, it would not have to be, if, if we're focusing on chickens here, it would not have to be a ten foot fence.
No, I, yeah. So, do we want?
I mean, I think we need to, I'm sorry, I thought that.
Pardon?
I think we need to say like, when used in conjunction with an educational research, but to not worry about the space and the but the the purpose of.
A primal, permaculture garden when used in conjunction.
No, just take that word out, I mean, we need to say when used in conjunction with it. As an occasional research.
Yeah, I guess we don't really care.
I don't care what.
Care what, I mean, you. Fertilizer or not, you know, it's not the point.
You could raise chickens out there and feed them a strange diet and slaughter them and look at their livers. I mean, I, it, it, I'm just, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Very research oriented.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, that's extreme.
So when used in conjunction with an educational research facility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, that's why I was getting more to like the lab.
Cause you're, yours could be, and it could evolve into something completely different in five years, yeah.
That's, that is true.
Yep, so I really don't, I'm not comfortable saying.
Permaculture.
Permaculture, I mean.
So an educational research.
Yes, when used in conjunction, you know, and then twenty chickens maximum, minimum.
Six square feet.
I mean, I don't know what the, I mean, there's gotta be some sort of USDA rule or something that chicken.
Yep.
Well, that's, I mean, that's where we got the backyard chicken stuff from, but it doesn't relate, you know, that'd be, you could have twenty chickens on sixteen hundred square feet, that's talking about a run as opposed to a garden.
Yeah.
You know, so there's a, there would be a minimum amount of space that.
But once again, I come back to my same point.
Does, does it even matter though, you know, I, I mean.
Well, yes, it does.
If you can only have twenty, and this would imply that you could have them on sixteen hundred square feet, which is quarter of the smallest lot we have at town. Uh, you know, I mean, it's big enough to be a garden, you can have your twenty chickens. No, but you still have to have the language about the coop, but you don't need the other.
Well, let's go with sixteen square feet, let's just double it and say you can have.
No, no, leave the coop part.
The coop stays.
Because the coop is covered.
Yeah.
So let's just, let's, 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 let's just, we need to massage part A. B, we're, we're trying to put two things together.
Yes.
And there, it's not, so we need to say, when used in conjunction with.
An education research facility. Of at least.
And the gar- or the area must be.
Of at least so many square feet.
So let's say, so if we have twenty chickens at sixteen, I mean, twenty chickens at.
Ten square feet per chicken.
Ten square.
Well, make it twenty.
Or twenty.
You know, what's that an acre?
Yeah.
Okay, so two thousand square feet. And so when used in conjunction with an educational research facility of no less than two thousand square feet.
Two thousand or twenty thousand.
Hundred.
Two thousand isn't very bad.
Twenty times ten square feet per chicken.
Yeah, you know.
It's two thousand.
So with every chicken, how many chickens you have?
Twenty square feet.
Twenty.
Twenty. And you're gonna give each of them twenty feet, that's twenty, that's four hundred square feet.
Yeah, this is just.
Where do we get two thousand square feet? Did you just make that up? I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, yes, so.
Oh, okay, alright. Well, I, I heard you.
Yeah, two hundred.
I heard you say ten of them and twenty feet.
Yes, it is, thank you.
I mean, the other thing we talked about last time was I realized that part of what you're trying to do is make it confining.
Yes, yes.
The zoning is a pretty confining thing to begin. That is not something that anybody is gonna be able to come and get that kind of zoning for their space. Um, and I know.
Well, except see the zoning, the, the, the zoning already exists.
Right, no, I, I know that, but if somebody else wanted to do this and would have to get it changed, that's a pretty specific.
Yes.
Set of conditions to get that kind of zone.
True, true.
And I think.
And this is, this is.
What I see on the map and envision, cause I've driven past it, twenty chickens there is like nothing.
Yeah.
Plenty of room for it.
Well, and.
But, yeah, and I, I mean, and so, thinking about where else this might happen, right?
Yeah.
You want, you want a sufficient area devoted to it so that somebody can't just do it out back of their building, right?
It's also falling under a zoning exception permit that we have purview over.
To, within the confines of your finding.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, if we do a thousand square feet, that's fifty square feet a chicken.
Yes.
If we do twenty chickens. So I'm comfortable with that.
But with a minimum area of a thousand square.
I think so, but we say up to twenty.
Right.
Chickens. So what if somebody wants to have a, a place that, um.
With five.
They're gonna have five chickens and they wanna do a small research based, whatever, then we're saying they have to have this huge area for them.
Well, you know, a thousand square feet isn't huge.
Well, it might be more than they have, only five chickens. Or six chickens.
Uh, well, if you're, it's not just the chickens, right? You gotta have a whole guard, functioning garden there.
Right.
That is natural.
We, we don't want.
But we don't, that's, here, we're stuck on the.
No, it's, yeah, it's not a garden.
We're stuck on there, we're stuck on there, then, I'm sorry, I don't mean to pick on you, but.
But this isn't about chickens, it's about the garden that can have.
Yeah, I understand that.
But the guy, we're putting these gardens within our E R O district, so.
But, okay, so then you're, are we talking about permaculture gardens? Or the ability for the universities or the, the high schools to have chickens for their own purpose of research? Whether it is a perma garden or the extreme version I gave or.
Right, right.
You know, feeding them to harvest eggs to show some, you know, what, what is our purpose here? Is it for?
Well, our.
You know, I'm always, I've always been under, you know, is it? Are we trying to allow chicken? In a very confined, specific, you have to have a perma garden, then here's what we do. Yes, if we, if we're, if we're just trying to say, you have to have some sort of.
Or is it an agriculture, it could have been agricultural experiment station where we raise chickens as the experiment and it's, and there's no garden involved?
Well, which I know Blissfield Schools does.
They, they raise them right out back in a, in a.
The tech center's gonna wanna do chickens.
They're outside the city.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, are we, are we talking about a perma garden or allowing chickens?
Well, I think you have to think about what that thing is and what it will look like. You know, if you have, if you allow a concentrated chicken pen within, you know, areas that are within the s- s- you know, confines of the city, is that something you wanna allow? Or do you wanna make sure there's a lot of space and the chickens are incidental to it?
I mean, that's the question.
Yeah.
This is a very specific request. Because the chickens are able to solve a problem. Now we're, we could be expanding this to, I'm not sure.
And this is my point from the beginning.
I know, I know.
You know, this is the thing, like, I, I love their idea.
I do too.
I love it, it's a beautiful thing, like. But this is where we, we just crack the door open. And you're gonna have the L A S D in here with the F F A program, well, we wanna do chicken raising, cause that's a, oh, part of F F A. You know, the city of, the, the, Adrian High School could be, well, we wanna do this in our environmental.
Well, they're not in E R O.
But I'm just saying.
Yes.
Like, I get that, but why you letting the colleges do it, if, why can't we do it?
In fact, I, I think the only three R Os we have are the two colleges and the family son.
So what, what are?
I think the.
Public schools.
L A S D is.
It may be that.
Yeah, but, but I'm just, like, I'm just.
No, no, I understand.
This is a sticky, what, sticky thing.
What are public schools on?
Usually residential, I mean, they're usually in residential district.
So they're not, they don't have any R O classical.
No, no.
But Leonard Christian does?
Leonard Christian does, they do, yes.
Was it?
You know. They wanted a bigger sign.
They did.
Seriously.
It is.
Yeah.
Say they want a bigger sign?
The, Leonard Christian wanted a bigger sign, permitted in E R O, it wasn't in the district they were, so. Well, maybe we're back to defining a permaculture garden and to address your concern, right? And specifying that it has to be that, that it's a.
Well, I don't think that's the answer, I think the answer is you have to say you have to have at least a thousand feet or a thousand square feet or.
Yeah, you almost need to make a situation that classifies them for now and see what happens.
I'm sorry?
Like, make a situation where it works for the request that's been made. And so it's almost exclusive.
But then we look like we're.
Well, no, anybody else can do the same thing, the exact same thing.
To come and explain.
Yeah.
And you'd have to buy enough land to do it.
For the purposes of an organic pesticide within a garden in the E R O district.
An organic pesticide free.
No, your, your biggest thing's gonna be area.
No.
It doesn't matter about pesticides.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's, but that's what their point is. I understand, it's their point, so we're saying, you know.
But he's saying.
Garden with chickens wandering around and I don't care.
What is a, what is a typical city lot size? Just a general.
It's a, the smallest lot is R, R four, R four, which is what?
Hundred by fifty, like mine?
That's smaller than that, that's, yeah, about thousand square foot.
No. No, isn't it five thousand?
Through five thousand square feet, I think.
Yeah, I think, that's what we wrote into the arch. The arch thing, that was a lot. When you drink.
I mean, I'm comfortable saying.
A thousand square feet.
Thousand or fifteen hundred.
Minimum of a thousand square feet designated to this.
Well, anybody, any place can do that, so, uh, any of these, but, you know, any little nook or cramp, that's a small space.
In an E R O.
But it's a very small space, and you're implying that you can put twenty, twenty chickens in that, whereas.
Why we need, we, in, in addition to saying a limit on the number of chickens, we need to say it needs to be a minimum of so many square feet per chicken.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that number is tiny, it's, you know, even when we were gonna allow backyard chickens, the yard would have been.
Would it, do you need per chicken square footage, or you could just lay out the lot size it should be?
Well, as, as I think Nancy pointed out, so.
Twenty chickens.
Then we need to say six thousand.
Right, but then that gets to the point of, are we looking for every opportunity? Are we looking at this case in point of what they're trying to do?
Probably, probably the latter.
So then it wouldn't matter if chickens were square feet, just lay out a massive square footage that fits that.
Which they.
With up to twenty chickens, and then you don't have to worry about every little E R O coming forward with five chickens, four chickens, three chickens, sixteen chickens?
No, I think that, I, I don't think so, I think that we've become so restrictive with this being a one situational.
For me, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm not, I'm not gonna lie about that.
We're gonna have.
And, and then it can be looked at if we need to change that.
I think if we think about what this, what, how this should read, it should read per chicken. Because then if Adrian College wants to, as my husband did thirty years ago.
Um, they, they were pheasants, but okay.
Have a little enclosure of pheasants over there where they're looking at, you know.
So how big a space did the emperor's pheasant?
Not near enough.
Yeah.
They were tagged release, you know, they were from the state, so they, so, you know, um, I guess it doesn't matter, does it? But I, I, but I think that, I think we should have the language that we want to be appropriate to chickens in an E R O.
I mean, if we're gonna, then I would say a hundred square feet per chicken. With a minute, with a maximum of point, so that's two thousand, or no, that'd be small too.
Small.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's okay.
You're having a space like that, it's half an acre or at least.
How big is two thousand square feet?
They've got acres.
Why not?
This, eh, the minimum should be.
What, two thousand square feet would be?
Twenty thousand.
My slot.
My slot.
My slot. Forty percent of your lot could be two thousand square feet, so you could have.
If you have a five thousand square foot lot.
Can you imagine twenty chickens on, you know, in your backyard?
No. No, not at all.
Two chickens.
Right, we're not going beyond.
But this is just for imagining what the size.
Right, right, just trying to get a picture.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
A thousand sweet, for, square feet per chicken?
Yeah, a thousand feet, square feet per chicken.
It sounds enormous, but.
But it, but it's about right.
It's about what you're looking at, would you wanna talk about?
You have twenty.
If you wanna talk about the grandeur scale.
I'm in a.
It'd be a thousand square feet per chicken.
Okay.
I think that's a reasonable model of land for doing what we're talking about.
Half an acre.
Thousand.
Not quite a half acre.
Which certainly addresses. The Dominican issue.
They have no issues.
Yeah, you got no issues with this, exactly.
But we don't know how big their permaculture garden is.
How big is the permaculture garden?
We have no idea.
Okay, it's, it's big though, yeah.
Spouting seed bait, but it's bigger than that, that's for sure. I mean, it's that whole.
Seeing that would see by that, by that statistic or by that measure, I could have five chickens in my entire yacht, just FYI.
Right.
Well, at a thousand square feet each?
Yes.
But you got, what are you gonna do about your house and your garage?
Get a picture of the scale.
I know.
Yes.
He's gonna live in the coop.
Yeah. But whi- which is a lot. But on the other hand, I mean, I think we're getting, we could we could say eight hundred, seven fifty or something like that, and it probably would still be okay.
Let's say a thousand.
Well, okay.
Let's say about forty. Cribbling about these chickens, like she's some. Pestilence that's coming to either end.
This, but this addresses the Dominican issue. At the moment.
Okay.
And probably may well preclude. Anything other than what they're proposing. Which is kind of where we're going.
I do think we need to say in there though that this is for the purpose of education and research.
Yep.
Not for the, you know, granted, these hens are gonna lay eggs and the sisters are gonna eat them, but that's not the point.
Right.
The point is to, you know, that that's the. I could get on board if we're willing to put that in.
And I think that's what we do.
So we remove permaculture.
For the purpose of education and research, not. You know.
Not gardening.
It's in the E R O.
Not.
Yep.
Production of eggs for people to consume.
Right.
Yep. So.
And this would be his only exception permit, so if somebody, so Adrian College would have to come to us and say.
Hey, this is gonna be our research.
This is gonna be our research project.
It's gonna be supervised by so and so. Yep. Okay. When used to facilitate. An educational research. Well, used to.
It would be educational or research.
An education or research. When used in conjunction with an educational or research facility. Up to twenty female chickens. Are there male chickens?
Well, there are. There's all roosters, but we don't want it.
I think chicken is. It's not one of those jokes, Mike.
No, okay.
We could or hens, if you wanna call them, but hen, you know, who knows what hens are.
Okay, female chickens, um, and a thousand square feet. Per bird uh in the fenced. Now, it doesn't have to be a run, but or covered by a thousand square feet. Per chicken.
Yep, so we have an experienced farmer in this room. We should ask him for his opinion.
He's, I'm not getting into this.
So I can tell you, we used to have a hundred chickens in a lot smaller areas.
Yes. But we're talking about in the city.
Yeah, I I and I and I know what you're going against.
Yeah.
I get that because the first thing that came to mind was. Anybody could come and say, I'm doing education research. I want twenty chickens in my backyard.
Yep.
You gotta, you gotta nip that now. I get that, but I assume that getting that kind of zoning. You got some hoops to jump.
Oh, yeah, and that's not, yeah, that's it's gonna be something really exceptional to get this kind of zoning seller. Can we put something together that addresses those suggestions?
We need to remove, so let's talk about the coop.
Okay.
So we need to remove two. Oh, or three of two. Or three.
Three, two, no, no, no.
We're just keep getting rid of the part about this. Eight square feet.
No, no, that's. That no, that's that's good to have in there.
Okay.
It's gotta be a real chicken coop. You can't just be putting them in a garage.
Yeah, it's already on the. Okay, well, I mean.
Yeah.
I thought that was more residential type.
Well, just in case. It it doesn't hurt to leave it in.
Okay.
Um, uh, and.
Cause it doesn't. Does it?
Yeah, 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 get rid of three.
Yeah.
That's not.
Yeah, we can.
I'll point to that.
That's what I thought.
And in paragraph C.
I think the last sentence in paragraph C is.
It's all just one sentence.
Well, yeah. No, yes. No, shall be. There's a period after rodents.
In a small.
What are we talking about in terms of protection? You're talking about accessory building to keep the feed in? Where's the feed gonna be?
Okay, there there we don't care as long as that doesn't attract is not such in such a manner as to attract rights, rats, mice, or other rodents. You can put it in a garbage, a tightly covered garbage.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that just gives us the power of some reason they get infested with rats to go out there and write a ticket and say you didn't do this part, right?
Well, we're when you review it, they're gonna have to demonstrate.
Yeah, but it. But yes.
Garbage container.
Acting in accordance with their approval.
Yeah, okay. So, yes, in a roundabout way, that's what it is. You lawyers.
Commissioners, if it's okay, shall we ask staff to uh uh.
Incorporate.
Incorporate these suggestions and bring it back to us next month and.
One, one final.
Agenda.
I'm sorry, one final thing.
Yes, Robert.
B, Roman numeral three.
Yep.
Number one. Is that getting rewritten as well? Then now that you don't need eight square feet in a.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, just making sure.
And have it on the agenda as a action item for next month.
Well, you'd have to have a public hearing.
Yes, that's what I mean. Okay. So that would, that would move it forward.
Are there actions on our end that needs to make for these public hearings? Are there actions on our end that we need to make in preparation for a public?
Um.
No.
No, other other than maybe, maybe unless you want to show up and have someone say we're in favor of this. And here's why.
It's an opportunity that you might really get to see what city.
Yeah.
Wait till you get to the city commission. That that comes next. That's.
Yes, because we will. We will hold a public hearing on this presuming presuming that after we've looked at the rewritten one, that it's okay. Uh, we will hold a public hearing next month on it and then we will take action on it. And if it's affirmative, it'll be in the form of a recommendation to the city committee. It'll get forwarded into the city commission with a recommendation for approval. And then they have it for at least two meetings.
Okay.
So. Okay.
Okay.
We need action to do that or to instruct staff or not?
I don't think.
Okay, very well.
I guess because we're having a public hearing and be good have motion.
Okay, we would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for next month.
So moves.
Okay, love and Taylor. All those in favor of setting a public hearing for next month, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, good. Thank you. Yes, or before you're married and have grandchildren. Um, next item on our agenda is discussion of the accessory and vehicle storage. You know, with the thought that that maybe take us just as long as the chickens.
Right.
Um, why don't we ask? Uh, so that he doesn't have to sit through all of that. We asked this gentleman, sir, if you'd come forward and identify yourself at the podium. And I understand that you want to give us a a a informal. Presentation on a on a possible planned unit development.
Yes, I don't know how good of a present presentation it'll be, but I'll do my best. I'm not real good at this stuff. So I'm David Van Brant. My wife and I own the old mill, which is formerly Cutler Dickerson's. Um, what we're looking to do, and I went in and discussed with Jeremiah and a little bit with Greg a while ago, we have. If any of you familiar with the old Walper Building, which is where Walper Furniture used to warehouse their stuff right there on the corner of. Water and Michigan. It is. The roof is rapidly decaying and it it's antiquated, it's short, it's not conducive to modern warehousing or cold storage. Um, basically, the gist of it is is it's been eighty to a hundred grand to fix the roof. I can put a new one up for about two hundred. So where we're at is is we're looking. We've got several. We've got six things that I was gonna do on the property and in, you know, in the surrounding vicinity of it, so. Is this where you want me to go through all six is what you're thinking or?
Yeah, I think just by way of introduction, you know, I mean, you all know.
Gross detail, but yes.
We're talking about the old mill site. You know, in general, and Jeremy's trying to bring it up on the zoning map, but. He has different zoning districts there. He's probably not completely compliant with any of them.
Quite honestly, it's kind of a mess.
Yeah, and so what we talked to him about most recently is maybe doing a planned unit development that would incorporate. Uh, all that he wants to do and, you know, make those uses right with the law, if you will. Uh, and so the P U D article requires him to come and pitch the idea informally to you first before he would make an application. And so that's the purpose of tonight. And so they, you know, if you could just explain, you know, overall, what your vision for the property is. And what the uses are that you see there in the future.
Okay, it it would be over the course of time. I mean, it's nothing that happened all at once.
It could be well be a phased project.
Correct, yes. Well, basically what I can afford. So, um. Do you want me to show you the building and what that initially I'm talking about?
Well, I think that's what.
Yeah, there we go.
Jeremiah is trying to get.
Yeah.
Get rid of the legend, man.
As I say, we have a screen.
So it's the old brick one on the corner.
Right on the corner, correct.
Legend up to the corners. Pull that legend out of the.
I'll move the picture then.
There we.
There you go. Yeah, so it's the L shaped one right on the corner. And you and you're correct, it is the old brick and and the brick is decaying. That's part of the reason too is that it's. It's been there for a hundred years.
Stretch.
Yeah, it's it's, yes, it's the L shape right at the end. And what we're looking to do there is put a building up.
So takes it down.
Yep, take that down and put it one. In the same footprint, same everything. Because we can read, but the concrete's okay, so we don't have to do a lot. And the building that we're gonna put up will have peers, so.
But then you also have other property that you've acquired.
Yes, I mean, we while we've got all that down here there, and I mean, like I said, there's actually. Six proposed things that we'd be doing over the course of time. The first one would be the demo of that and then put a new one up. But that's why these guys recommended a planned unit development. So that we could basically encompass everything all at once, because it is. There's several tax IDs there. There's several addresses there. It's it's never really been taken care of over the course of the.
Hundred and fifty years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it before. Before it went under, it was the longest contiguous running business in Lenawee County. Yeah, I always thought that was a neat thing. I wish I could have got it right there so I could have kept it going. I think I think that's pretty cool. Man, that's a that's a touch of history right there and and uh, but that's so.
Wish you removed that box up.
Would you like me to progress into the next thing that we have to do? So last year, we put up a new grain bin for storage for, and this is actually for our farm's grain. My dad and I farm together out in Onsted. And one of the reasons we purchased the facility, I'm actually the original reason we purchased the facility was for the grain setup. Um, because it we could buy it right and it was still workable. So we're we're adding to it because we we have the need for the grain. So, um, our plan is to put up another grain silo or grain bin exactly the same size as the one we put up. Guess it'd be a year ago, year and a half ago, um, fifty-three thousand bushel. So it would be. Exactly the same as the one that we did put up. So and it'd be, and if you look on the picture, you can see.
So the new one is on the furthest up. Uh, it could be that next round circle towards the street. It would be the one we put up this year if possible.
That makes sense.
Okay, so additional additional grain then.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And then the third thing would be to demo the old smoke stack. And I've got questions for you guys on that. Is there any grants? It is. It is getting in. It's getting in tough shape.
Make it fall that way.
If I could, if I could jump it over there, I'd do it in a heartbeat because I.
Proper explosives, it could work.
Yes, yes.
And and.
You've also acquired other property to the west.
Yes, we purchased the 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 address, uh, two forty-one Park Street.
And so that's the property that's not even zoned business and so on.
And that that was my final thing I was gonna bring up is to see about rezoning that because that that could down the road lead into more. We may need more space.
Well, so what would your proposal for that property be?
You tell me. As far, you know, what are you? Are you? Are you saying what am I gonna put on it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it would be, it would be how we would. It's a work in progress, so it could be.
Give us your dreams.
It could be parking, it could be storage, it could be.
Worst part, where is this piece? I mean, so can you point out the property you acquired there?
It's this house right here.
Oh, okay.
And the reason we purchased it, it sits about two feet off the property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, that that and that garage, so this is a property right.
All the way down to the south to college.
Basically, here, here, to here, all the way to the corner, back up and then around here, right here.
And so if you look to the at the zoning map on the left, you see that's all.
Looks like an old trucking.
Yes, and and that is another thing there. That building is in, it was in decay when we bought it.
Yeah.
Um, we, that is planned to come down in the process. If you guys allow us to. It's planning to come down this winter yet, if possible.
Well.
While while we're there taking other things down, we were gonna go on and take.
You know, you 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 don't need permission from the planning commission to to demolish.
Demolishing.
Okay.
Uh, you you'll need, you know, permission from the building department, but not from us.
Okay, well, and that's I'm I'm new at this, so.
Yeah.
Coach me along.
Can stop me if I'm. Saying wrong something.
So far, so good.
And then, and if you want to develop the entire parcel. I think I could speak for all of us that we'd be interested in seeing a formal proposal for that. But what you'd need to do is some kind of probably architecture, not architectural drawings, but some kind of formal drawing saying. This is what we intend to have here. This is what we intend to have here. This is what's gonna be over here. And this is how I plan on faith.
Plain wave out here. When they came to us the first time, they had tennis courts. There was all kinds of like. With wishing, this is what we're, this is our grand plan. And we went, okay, that's great. But every time they do something, they have to come to us and say, here's what here, anytime they change from the plan. This is they have to come to us and say.
So you want it relatively close.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or or you can, or you can, you could label a section. Reserve for future development.
Well, as as long as you're going through the process of rezoning it though, right? To P U D, then it would be ideal to have some idea what you want to use it for. Well, and then you get the planning commission to buy into that and now you could actually use it for that. It doesn't have to be specific in terms of the layout. But it needs to be pretty close in terms of the proposed use.
What we're gonna do.
And the more the more specific you can be, the less hassle you'll have in the future.
Right, okay. You know, which and that was it was in the list that I was gonna describe, because there is one more building that I was gonna put up. Um, and it would be.
In this area here. Up here, right in here.
Uh huh.
Um, proposed basically at one twenty by one forty.
I do have talks with. At least one person that may. I don't know if I'd call it manufacturing, but it's it's a basically a distillery. And they have talked to us about. Working with us because we have the grain handling facility already there and that is kind of gives a little bit of a vertical integration process in there.
That'd be cool.
Um, and but if not, I'm also planning on, if I'm gonna do the building, it is for. I'm gonna set it up for cold storage mostly. And then and then if we do the manufacturing, I will build it to what we need to do at that time. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Because I know I can, I know I can use it for cold storage. If the other deal falls through, I know I've got a fail safe is what I'm looking at.
Yep.
But like Mike said, the bet, the more you can be specific.
Yeah.
The better it will be for all of us.
And and the less hassle you'll have.
You know, like where your green bins are. If your if your pipe dream is four more there. Then put them there. You may never do them.
Well, and and that's, I guess. I guess that's what I was worried about is because I I do have ideas, um, might be my kids doing it because I'm gonna outgrow it, but. We we do have ideas on what we would like to do as we grow if prosperity allows us to.
But that's what you should, you should, you should shoot for the moon.
Okay, because honestly, we call it the Buckeye, the brick building behind the grain bins there. It's in pretty tough shape. At some point, it'll wind up coming down and we may put up grain bins in that spot. Based on if the other deal goes through for the distillery, I'll need more storage and more processing area. So it's. Yeah, so I, my worry is with that, I don't have it prepared right now, and this is what I really wanted. I wanted the feedback, so I. These guys have been good. They've 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 coached me and encouraged me and and. Yes, I shouldn't say, I don't know if they've encouraged, but you've told me what I needed to do.
We would be interested in hearing more.
And I guess the one thing I'm worried about though is I, if we can, I. I kinda got the cart in front of the horse. I didn't mean to, but I misunderstood a couple of things. And the L shaped one, I actually have already got the building purchased. Um, but it's not, you guys are gonna tell me when I can put it up, hopefully. So how do I go about getting that part of this process somewhat started?
Well, that that's within the area that's zoned for business right now.
It is?
Yeah. According to that map, it is.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I'm colorblind and that map.
It is.
It's that map and me don't get along right now.
So you could probably do that, yeah.
As long as it doesn't yet require, it's not big enough to require site plan review.
Probably is already in violation of setbacks. What's already there.
I'm not sure there's any setback.
If I use the existing foundation, though, I thought we were okay. If I use the existing foundation though, I thought we were okay.
But if he's using the existing foundation.
Yeah, we're we're putting it back on the exact.
I I don't think there's any setbacks in B two.
There are, yeah. Like we just discussed them for this, for this, this guy here.
Oh.
But it's a possible, it's possible to do.
Now, there there really isn't a lot, as far as a line of sight at the intersection, the bridge is ten times worse than the building.
Yeah, it's true.
The building really does not hinder your line of sight. If you, especially if you pull up far enough to look past the bridge, the bridge is miserable.
Yes.
I mean, that that I I I, that is hard to see.
It's a dangerous intersection.
Yes.
Unfortunately, it doesn't get much traffic.
Hopefully it gets more. I mean.
Well, when you talk about the distillery though, you gotta think about where our trucks could get there and.
Right.
You know, where where are they gonna go?
They would come in off uh Michigan, or they could come through our yard off college.
But that's the thing. So you need to lay out, you need an architect to lay out.
Right.
All your stuff so you can say, okay, this actually can function the way we're gonna approve it.
Okay.
And I would caution you to be sensitive to the fact that it's immediately adjacent to a residential.
Well, and we, we're gonna leave all the trees. And if we need to plant more, I I I know one time it was mentioned fencing. I like natural. I would rather put up trees and shrubs and bushes and
fencing can.
Because they they're more aesthetically pleasing and and.
Yep.
I mean, I gotta look at it too.
Yep.
So I I, and I like it because to me they they hold the noise in better. They knock the dust down better, but they they just all aspects of it. I think it's a better way to go.
Next question, we mentioned two forty-one Park.
Yes, sir.
That's at a different elevation than everything.
And that was, if you notice my hesitation as I went to speak there on what it would do, that is the hurdle we would have to cross. So would it be used for parking or would it be used for, not necessarily storage, but that's the hurdle is because of the 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 height.
It's above.
Yes.
By quite a bit.
Yes.
How do you know that?
In that house? Yep. Well, and you know, it it always amazed me.
You cannot see the historic marker?
Every, oh, well, I I it it won't happen for a while because, because quite honestly, my daughter's living in it now. I mean, it it's, and we we don't have any plans immediately. It was that they brought up that I needed to do a longer plan. And and I might as well throw it in there. Yeah. There's a big elevation change. I I I'll be honest with you, I've never figured out how the other building that we own got to be where it's at with that house there. Because it's, it's, I mean, it's such two foot off the line. And 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 it's uh, and you've, and probably the house at that time was had some issues because of the elevation change. That's pretty cool. I appreciate that. My daughter, my daughter is a hi- is a history buff, so she would love it. You can, anytime you want, anytime.
Hurrying out of the basement.
Well.
My daughter works at the mill, so.
So going forward.
Yep.
You need to, I mean, this is the point where you're gonna need to spend some money and get some drawings.
Well, and and I have already talked, they they told me I would need one. I didn't think I would need one for everything all at once.
No.
Okay, I I they told me I would need one for the L-shaped building, the the old Whopper building.
Mm hmm.
That's coming down. Um, and that was all I was setting up for right now.
And that may, that may be simply not part of the, you may not need to do a planned unit development just for that because that's already in a commercial area.
Okay, so we are.
That could be.
But you need. But once you take it down, it's probably gonna have to conform to the setbacks or you'll need another zoning variant.
Yeah, so talk to Jeremiah before you get started.
Whether or not, well, the actual problem for site distance, if it's in that site distance triangle we were talking about with the car lot.
Yeah.
You know, then, you know, that.
I was actually going through my head when you were talking about that.
Yeah, so it could be, but we're not in a position to answer that without.
I I think it will be okay because it is a grassy area already. Nobody can park there. Nothing else can go in there except for the building.
But that that building is a building code, their their issue, not ours.
Yeah.
Okay. So what is my next step then? I mean.
Just that, if that, if your next step is the L-shaped building coming down
Yeah.
and a replacement there, your next step is to get with Jeremiah as with with a plan, you know, with some some architectural drawings.
Okay.
To review if it is, will be in compliance. You don't need to come back to us necessarily unless it needs a site plan review.
So that's, the architectural drawings different than the stamped prints for the building, is that correct?
No, that's the same.
No, same thing.
Same thing.
It is the same thing because I have this.
What Jeremy, what Jeremy's concerned about is the the layout, not the Yeah. architectural plans. He just needs to know how it's gonna fit within the zoning requirements, you know, so just a.
How's it gonna sit on the on the lot?
Okay, and and again, it's gonna be sitting in the exact same footprint as this.
Well, it probably isn't gonna be. That's, that's the thing we're saying because.
You're gonna tell me I gotta move it?
The current building may not conform and so absent going to the zoning board appeals again like you did for the silo.
Yep.
Um, you know, it might have to move.
But without a, but without some drawings, they can't answer your question.
So again, I I don't mean to, I'm learning. So the architectural drawings are different than the blueprint or the stamped drawings for the building. Because the stamped drawing for the buildings, they 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 contain the foot, I mean.
Do you already have that?
They don't show it, yes, but it doesn't show it laid out on the land.
Yeah, it's kinda laid out on the site.
That's what he means.
Yes, okay. So it's basically a architectural drawing that is.
It's a site.
Blueprint of the property.
Doesn't even have to be an architectural plan if all, if it doesn't require site plan review and not, you'll tell us, Jeremy, whether it requires site plan review, but if it doesn't require, if it's not big enough to require it to go to planning commission, then it just needs to be a dimension drawing.
Okay, how, what is the size that will cause it to be thrown in or thrown out either way?
It's gonna tell you.
What size that building would be?
Um, it's like ninety-five by fifty and then I think it's forty by thirty. Because it's actually basically two buildings. They're just connected. It's under a hundred foot and under, I don't wanna say, under sixty, under a hundred, under fifty and under forty.
Well, this is something you can figure out.
I was gonna say, consult with Jeremiah and then the.
Okay, and and I wanna be, I mean, I I would like to move forward. I'm 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 worried about the building. If I straight up, we get two foot of wet heavy snow, it's probably gonna be on the ground.
Would that save uh deconstruction costs?
Uh, no, because I'll probably take out another building when it goes. And I'm really trying to avoid that.
Okay.
That building's fine and and it's very usable and and I.
And and removal of a building
Doesn't require.
Doesn't require our permission.
Yeah.
Okay, well, the biggest, the biggest thing, and 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 this goes back several years ago, my grandparents used to own the gas station and tipped it. It burnt. They decided they were gonna rebuild, but when the excavator come in and took every, he took everything. He, if he would have left a corner of the foundation, they could rebuild. The state told him no. Because he took everything out. So my concern is that, that's it's stuck in the back of my head since I was a kid.
If that building is coming down to the foundation, you are still gonna have to be in compliance.
Yeah.
With the current zoning.
Okay.
And and building codes.
Okay, but I'm I'm, like you said, I'm leaving the foundation aspect.
Yep, yep.
And I'd have to come in and get a variance to possi- if I can.
May or may not, it remains to be seen.
Right, that's exactly. That's what I'm getting at. I gotta come in and approach you guys.
Yes. Have drawings for the, set up a meeting with them, bring your drawings.
No, not for three months.
Not for removal, but we're.
Okay.
If you're worried about knocking this down and then not being able to get it back up, um, then.
Do it first, do that.
Well, and that, and that is what I'm concerned because if worse comes to worse, you guys tell me, no, I gotta stick a bunch of money in that building.
Well, again.
It's, I don't like good money going after bad.
We're not gonna tell you no, Jeremiah may, based on.
The rules that already.
On the rules that already exist, so. Okay.
And I'll be, and and they have been very fair. I mean, in the pad with the grain bin and that, so.
But we would, we would look forward to to seeing your planned unit development. So, thank you.
Okay, now, based on that, if I get a quick question, so the planned unit development, what all does it entail? The entire property or does it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I gotta start just like I just did here.
It'll all get rezoned into one P U D.
Okay.
Yep.
Plainway out there, the old training school.
Yep.
Is zone P U D, the whole thing.
Okay. What does that, it allows me to do what I need to do.
It it allows you to do what you come to tell, what you come and tell us you're going to do.
Okay.
And if you change.
And use some leeway.
It it gives you, it gives you lots of leeway, but then once you, when you tell us what you're gonna do, then that's what you have to do. So.
You just, I wanna throw one more caveat on it. My daughter, and she's a history buff. She would like to take the one area where the old Cutler Dickerson office is with the upstairs. It is a beautiful old building inside.
Yeah.
She would like to turn it into a.
Put that in your plan.
Put it in the plan.
Put it in the plan.
Wow, we're, um, a venue for either like having weddings or or and she actually, if the distillery aspect takes off.
Yeah.
She would love to throw that in there and then have a tooth here.
Yeah, yeah, put it, put it in the plan, seriously.
And and honestly, what a beautiful setting. I mean, that, when the, when the trees are blossoming down through there and that, that is a beautiful area to walk through.
Okay, moving on, folks.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. I I, hopefully I didn't screw up too bad.
No.
All right, and like you said, my, my, my wife's the short, my wife, my daughter's the short blonde and blonde with the long hair. I'm going to talk to her. Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda, a discussion related to accessory vehicle storage. Staff has again uh provided at our request, uh, a draft um alterations to the existing ordinance. I presume you've had a chance to look at those. Um, discussion or comments?
So Jeremy and I sat and rewatched your whole discussion the last time before we.
For you.
You are. Oh, yeah. Before we drafted.
And you actually got something out of that?
Okay, the first thing.
End of the day.
The first thing I I, in part B, the open storage of any recreational vehicle. There's a guy in the corner of Mackenzie and Mommy. He's got three trailers that he parks there every night that are his construction trailers.
Right.
That's not a recreational vehicle. Now, I know it's a utility trailer. But that's the kind of thing we're trying to prevent.
But.
Yeah, you you, well, I mean, a lot of zoning ordinances, and I don't know if ours.
Commercial, commercial.
A lot of zoning ordinances prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles within residential districts. That's why it specifically says residential.
Mm hmm.
Recreational rather than vehicle. So is that something else we should?
Commercial.
I, it may, and ours may say that too. It's probably in the parking article, not in here.
You know, part of me says, if we enforce the existing one, we would take care of a lot of this. Boy, if if we, if we were to pass this and the city commission was to pass this, this is gonna be a enforcement headache there because there will immediately be fifteen hundred violations as soon as this goes.
So what? So what? People sit right here at this counter every week and it's like, I want us to be more progressive. I want us to be more this. I want us to be more like Ann Arbor. I wanna be more like East Lansing. I want, this is what those communities do.
Right, I know.
This is less restrictive than.
A lot of.
A lot of.
Yes.
So if this is what everybody wants, this is what they get.
My, I guess my question is, are we prepared? And it's not, it won't come to us as a problem. You know, the people don't come to the planning commission to say, the city ticketed my trailer. Uh, they'll come to the city commission.
So what?
Well, are we prepared?
I gotta take it from my trash can because my tenant didn't pull it in.
Is this, is this more of those situations where we might wanna say something to the, through great perhaps to the city commission or.
You have.
Well.
That's what you're saying right there.
Well. Well, I don't know. I don't know what the heck you do.
That's not what I, I hear you over communicate with them.
Yeah.
I don't think it's.
Before it comes to, before it comes to you.
I read that somewhere. I'm not gonna take that, but that's the thing.
I have a neighbor who uh had an enclosed utility trailer when he moved in a couple, three years ago. He opened it up and he had all of his furniture for his deck and everything, you know.
That's where he stores.
But then it it stayed, then he added a slab. Had more room because he had a couple of kids. Everybody's got a car, you know. And then all of a sudden I come home one day and I look in the backyard and I'm hearing what's going on back there? And he put up an absolutely gorgeous, I guess that's a new garage really, uh, on a new slab that he had for it. It it fits the neighborhood perfectly and I hope he didn't violate that thing because it solves, he doesn't have a basement. And he said, my garage is full of stuff that used to be in my basement, not the old one.
Right.
But it was a good solution, at least from my vantage point. I can't imagine it with neighbors. It's very attractive architecture.
I mean, it clean, it it it.
It cleans up a lot of stuff.
There's maybe people that are just trying to avoid paying to store your boat or store your RV. But if if that's, I don't care.
This also goes, but this, you know, the, this will also require some education. If I'm thinking back to five years, four or five years ago, when the Z B A gave a lot sized variance to those two little tiny houses on the corner of Clinton or Locust, Locust and Maple.
Locust and Maple, which by the way, do not have basements to your point.
And no storage buildings whatsoever. And so everything's, and I, I was the only one that voted against that. I objected at the time for just.
To your great credit, to your great.
For just that reason, because now they've got a trailer and they've got two towers. And it is the proverbial eight pounds and five pound bag.
That need to be one thousand.
That didn't work very good, yeah.
No.
Okay.
And so, so we, it, it just kind of reinforces that. You know, should we, should we let people build houses, new houses without garages? Because where do you put, no, I seriously.
No, no, I understand, I understand.
Where do you, where do you put your lawnmower?
It sounds.
You can't put your gas lawnmower inside the house.
Well, you can.
Well, you get electric. I lived for many years without a garage and I have electric mower and I had, you know. Well, if you live in Ann Arbor, you can't have a gas lawnmower anyway, so.
Can't have a gas leaf mower.
You don't, you don't think that's coming?
Ors are next.
That's coming. Moors are there.
Yes, yes, okay, okay.
I was very proud with my electric mower when I lived there.
I have a. Okay, back, back to the ordinance.
On uh V four.
Uh huh.
It has no. Vehicles will be on, driver, period, not to cheat.
I have the words for that.
Once per thirty days, load and load. Are we just saying? First, to me, that means I have two cars. I park one in my driveway and I park one in my garage. I mean, I can't.
Oh, no, no, it's not, it's, it's, it's a reference. We need to make, we we need to make that
She made you make sure that.
Clear that that vehicles re- refers to the vehicles listed in in B.
I don't know how you did that.
You just put recreation.
Yeah, just add recreational.
And honestly, the forty-eight hours.
It's fine, it's too dated.
I think it's a little chore.
How about fifty?
I mean.
On seventy-two, W two R? That would be a little.
I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying, like, you come home from long.
You you leave it parked there and, you know, for more than two days to unload and unload.
If if the purpose is to load or unload.
Yeah.
Then two days is enough.
Then you're going.
Yep.
Park on Thursday.
Yeah, but stood out what code enforcement.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So I'm on six two. So one for two days to load or unload, that mean that you can't go camping every other week in the same month or in the same three day period.
That's what that means, but who's going to actually?
Well, no, but we shouldn't be surprised. We shouldn't be doing things that we can't control.
Here, here. I agree, Gordon.
Well, I mean, we threw that out. I mean, that one, you didn't discuss how many days. We threw in thirty. But here's the thing, you think it should be once a week, then. So. But let's be honest, that's not gonna get called in or the code enforcement officer's not gonna see that. Now, there's a, there's a house on the north side of Adrian that the minute the water breaks open, they have their float boat sitting in their driveway that's barely enough room for two cars to park there. And it's there all summer long. You know, you didn't take that to the lake.
My neighborhood, so.
No, well, probably hasn't. But that's the thing, you know, it's, it's preventing that kind of thing that I'm looking for or the guy in the corner that's got the Ford trailers and his three pickup trucks that are parked in the garage, which besides the fact, they're, it's a dirt driveway. They park them in the yard, like they're in violation of many other things besides that.
Well.
And that's the thing that.
Enforce that.
Took, yeah, but cleaning up, you know, and that's, that's what, you know, yeah, every weekend somebody goes camping and on Friday night or Sunday night they come home and they unload and then Monday afternoon they take it.
Hopefully you have the storage.
Yeah, the storage lot, or wherever they keep it, yes, that's fine. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 we, it's, we own it, we, it's at the DPW, yeah, we, we had to haul it away ourselves, we couldn't.
There was nobody in there, was there?
Huh?
Was there anything in it?
I don't think so.
And all of a sudden it appeared, and I said, you know, what's going on, and he said, I keep getting these calls all the time, says because you have a huge sign up there. With your picture on it, everybody knew that you sold that to the owner. And you own it.
I mean, yeah, we, we hauled it away.
Is, is, is twenty-two feet the right number, uh, maximum length? Um, that seems. Maybe that's about right, I, I don't know how big this stuff is, do people have forty-foot travel trailers?
That's a very.
That's not too that, not, not, not all that big, that's my dad's fishing boat.
Yeah, I mean, a fishing boat, I mean.
Well, okay, so.
I mean, my boat's twenty, I have a boat that's twenty-one feet long, and with the trailer on it, it's probably close to thirty. But it's thirty.
And does it go in your backyard?
And.
No, it goes up north.
Do we need to specify how that measurement is made, is it from the front of the hitch to the back of the bumper, or is it from the, or, or, or am I. Putting too fine of a point on this? Yeah, the trailer.
The whole thing.
Trailers.
But I mean.
Thirty, yeah.
The trailer itself, I mean, it's, you just say, the vehicle or the trailer it sits on. Because if you want to split hairs, a snowmobile's not that big, you can just put the snowmobile in your backyard, sit on.
But the trailer councils, the trailer councils are likely, so, so, okay, so it's the full length, okay.
From stem to stem.
Yes. Twenty-two's got arbitrary.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't, we didn't do any research for that, that's just a number that's been.
Yep.
Bantering about, but maybe there's a different number, maybe it's twenty-four.
Maybe it's twenty-five, yeah, okay.
Well, I think there was a number in the Ann Arbor ordinance, and that's what.
That's probably where we got it from.
Are these, are the.
Yes, I thought, our Ann Arbor had twenty-two, and I'm sure they did way too much research.
Would just be subject to, can I get a variance, can I go to the Z B A and say I wanna store a twenty-five foot boat? No, I don't know, I just know.
Well, it's okay, yeah, this is, this is an age-old, not, not for y'all, but for me, an age-old argument. Like, can Z B As vary things like that, that are real, I, my argument always was, that's a question of use, and you can't grant use.
That's, that's what, that would be my conclusion.
No, this is not, okay, no. Wouldn't the only feasible reason they would ask for variances is economic? Now, the one thing that is missing from here, that you missed in the conversation, is people using sprinter vans as their daily driver.
They're not.
But you can get a Sprinter, they're becoming more and more common, they're becoming more and more common where it's a somewhat. You know, you and Kai Kevai when you travel the country.
Yes.
It's got a little shower.
Aren't they like, aren't they like ten, ten, twelve feet?
Yeah, I mean, they're, but they're good size, but they're, they're, they, they're an RV, but some people use them as their daily drive.
Yes, yes.
So. It's like a class B, there's a, there's a definite, it's like a class B or something.
Yep.
That's used as a daily driver, and I don't know if the state of Michigan. Licensees them different, um, I don't know, but that was one thing I did bring up that. You know what I mean, Greg, what, yeah.
Yeah, they're.
You know, it's more up north type thing, but, you know, the. This is my daily driver.
Yeah, yep, on the other hand. Is, is, does that? Yeah, I'm not sure how we differentiate that. Well, not, not, I don't think by, by people who sell RVs standards, it's not. Okay. Bob, we haven't been here before. Well, boy, you'd be hard pressed. Yeah.
But they, they may also, I mean, if they're your day drive, then maybe it looks like a regular vehicle.
Well, they're, it's a high top, it's a high top van, it's a high top van. See, and I, I think we should, we almost have to. Any recreational vehicle, let's see, I, do we need to?
We need to probably define.
Define recreational vehicle, yeah.
Just make yourself know.
Yeah, define recreation.
Definition of recreational.
I mean, you can go on YouTube right now, find, hundreds of people that live in those things. Yeah.
But, but they are used for a lot of things.
Yes. Exactly. But then, in which case, I would say that's not a recreational vehicle, then, you know, recreation.
A vehicle primarily designed as temporary living quarters for recreational camping or travel purposes, including a vehicle having its own motor power. Or a vehicle mounted on or drawn by another vehicle, Act four one nine, Michigan, P A of seventeen seventy.
Okay.
Well, that doesn't include boats.
Vehicle primarily designed as temporary living quarters for recreational camping or travel purposes. Including a vehicle having its own motor, or a vehicle mounted on, or drawn by another vehicle. It's on a trailer drawn by a new vehicle.
Well, that's great, you put that out down, just looks like a van.
Yeah.
It wouldn't fit in your garage?
It's too high.
It's probably too, I mean, that's just a reg, you know.
I mean, I think I would just use common sense on.
Yes.
Going after those, if it looks like they're.
Using it every day, yeah.
I'm gonna go, if it looks like it's just a daily driver, I'm not.
Well, if it's parked in the driveway and it moves every day, fine, if it's parked in this, in the backyard and the weeds, weeds growing up through the floorboards. You know, yeah. I, you know, if, if, if this is the general consensus of the direction we want ahead, I think this is going in the right direction.
I should say that there, we kind of glanced over, but there's a ten percent area rule too, that we added. There's a ten percent area rule, so kind of like sheds, you can only have fifteen percent, I think it was.
How much of the backyard?
Fifteen percent.
Your parking space.
This would take from the rear of your house, that, take that, calculate ten percent, that's all.
That's not it, that's not it.
It is.
Number three. I was just saying, because you glanced over, so it's kind of like if you have, you know, whatever amount, you got ten percent, and that's all the stories you get correct. That way it'll keep people from having fifteen boats in their backyard.
Yep, yep.
Then, you know, it keeps it kind of relative to your yards.
Gordon, we need another code enforcement officer too.
How many you want?
Let's buy, hire six, and then when we don't have any problems, we can fire someone.
No, I hate.
Do anything else either.
I just put, I just picked a guy, but didn't put him on the schedule.
Guys, here, here we are. Things that we've discussed that we wanted to include in here i- is, we want to also include commercial vehicles. Okay, we might wanna make reference to commercial vehicles.
If it's not our.
Well.
If it's not already in the other part of the ordinance.
Yeah, we defi, well, because we define recreational vehicles. But we wanna make sure there's provision in the parking.
Exactly, exactly, that are similar to these.
I think there are.
Yep, and then we wanna define recreational vehicles.
Nope, it's already defined, Jeremy read you the.
Sorry.
Is that in our, that was from our ordinance, oh, okay, sorry, I thought you were, I thought that was some.
No, that was actually from our ordinance.
Okay, well, and, well, we get this, all, all this, all these changes in the new ordinance?
Yeah, well, when we get it done, then we'll give it to the consultants, so they include it in the new ordinance.
Both, we want to do the same with this that we just did with the, uh, with the Pickens. And ask staff to bring us a draft and set a public hearing for the next meeting to consider it, please.
The move is set a public hearing or exit.
Gordon, we have motion in support, uh, to review the fresh draft ordinance on this. And to set a public hearing for that for the February, that'll be February sixth meeting, all those in favor of doing so, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Is there any other business for us this evening? Folks, I sent you a copy of, a draft copy of the annual report. If you have any comments, or suggestions, or changes, let me know, and I will try to incorporate them before I send that on. No, I did not.
Did you?
No, not, not yet. Yes, it is, and, and, yes, it is, thank you. Okay, well, it's. Well, you know. I, and, and, so you know, Don, so you know, I cut and pasted that paragraph from last year's report. Which came from the year before that. If there's no other business to come before us this evening, there's no one online, folks, a motion to adjourn, please. We are adjourned, thank you.
Is the internet turned off?